Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All the meetings, Liberty County Board of Commissioners. It's an order. It's good to see everyone. Hello to those of you who are out there on Facebook, where we'll be in live stream. Good to have you. Thank you. I get feedback from the audience a lot of times that folk who I didn't know were watching the meetings are watching. So we're happy to have that audience. Hope to maintain that audience even when this whole COVID thing goes away and, Lord, we pray it'll go away. Good to have everybody present. We do know that Commissioner Jones over here has to be excused because of work issues. And Commissioner Frazier is en route. So Ms. Patty Lyons in the audience today. Good to see you. She's been in our community and good to have her. Today she told me she would kind of peep in for a little while. So happy to have you today. And we are praying for your mother just as well. This time we ask Mr. Mosley if he will come lead us in our invocation. And I pledge the allegiance. Please stand for that, please.
Let us pray. Gracious and most benevolent Father, we come before your divine presence. Thank you for this beautiful day and for this weather, Father God. We thank you for the relief from this COVID-19. And we continue to pray, Father God, for those who are going through. We ask, Father God, for divine insight for this deliberative body as they discuss the business of this community. We pray that you be with them and strengthen them, Father God. And we pray for those, Father God, in our community who are suffering. And we pray, Father God, for those who open up their energy and efforts to improve the plight of those in need. Thus we thank you for in the precious, poignant, and powerful name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't hear Commissioner Gillett saying that, so I guess we're getting better.
Did she was the meeting properly advertised?
It was, sir.
I think there are evidences. All right, we're gonna move right along. What I'm thinking about, thank you all too for prayers for my mom, who's been a little ill too, but she's recovering. So thank you all for your prayers and concern for her and others who are recovering.
Chairman, did you want to amend the agenda?
I do, sir. Thank you for quick reminding of how mine was kind of traveling there for a minute. There's one item we need to add to the agenda that's committee appointments. So we want to make that, if you will, please, item 5F. So the chair asked for a motion to amend our agenda to make item F, committee appointments.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? All the people raise your right hand, please. All right, the agenda is amended as voted on. Thank you so much for that. All righty, Mr. Long, thank you.
Mr. Chair, before you go any further, I'm being accused of taking roads that is already paved again.
You're not being accused. I was congratulating you.
Y'all already had it.
I was congratulating you, my friend.
There's more to that story, I know. It's a long jump in before they get too far off course here.
All right, you're ready for me.
Yes, sir.
So I'm gonna, everybody should have a copy of my report. I want to just kind of hit a few highlights. I'm not gonna try to read every one of them again. One thing that I have not briefed you guys on before is the impaired waters plan that we have as part of our MPDES permit. Basically, it's on Peacock Canal, the portion that's really alligator creek. There's a section that has impaired waters. It's on the state impaired waters plan. We have two locations every quarter. We've got to monitor the quality of the water in that area. So this is the first year we've started having to do annual reports. So you'll be seeing that come up a little bit more and more. On the Allen's Highway box covert, there's some movement on that. I think we're almost to a point where we should be getting close to having that grant awarded or some movement in that area. So I want us to be on the lookout here shortly for something to happen as far as that goes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
To you and Mr. Brownie and Mr. Long, just got a question. You know, we heard Commissioner Wallen, we have talked about the Allen's Highway. With this infrastructure bill that was signed the other day, is there a possibility that Liberty County could look at, that's a long road, to see what we can come out with Allen's Highway? I know we got other roads also, but we're looking at those differently. But Allen's Highway, you know, used to be a state road. Now it converted back over to the county. But like Commissioner Wallen has said in the past, it's a narrow road, two lane. Anything happens down there, you're pretty well blocked in.
It's the main artery for a pretty good-sized population.
And I guess what I'm asking, see if we can keep an eye on this infrastructure bill to see if we can come up with, you know, anything out of to improve that road.
I'd add too. We haven't got any specifics on it yet. We'll start digging though. Yes, sir, we'll be.
Well, just let me just chime in then. Two things. That's one I would ask. How do we get in line to make sure that when those funds are dispersed that we're ready to go? Secondly, ironically, you mentioned that road. Today, I was, where's Mr. Mosley? The y'all students, a few of them there were from the coast. And they said, can you do anything about our road? And I thought about you. So it's very timely that you talk about Allen's Highway. They said, our road needs some improvement. Needs improvement. So we certainly take all that into consideration.
I'm sorry.
It's quite all right.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we had a town hall meeting some years back, and our congressman was there, and that was brought up a couple of times. You said it's a main artery. It's the only artery.
Only artery.
I mean, there's no other way to put it. Even with the box covered out, that's gonna go in there. That's gonna, that work is gonna have to be planned to where the five o'clock traffic and eight o'clock traffic going back in two is gonna be impacted. So I know the box cover is a big deal, but it would surely, we ought to be able to get some help from the federal government because of that being a hurricane evacuation route. I mean, if they'll do it in Tybee, then they ought to do it in Liberty County. They want our boat ramp to put the sailboats on. And I don't have a problem with a boat, but I'm just saying that we need to get a little consideration.
We'll continue to beat a squeaky wheel. And I remind you before, before Mr. Long goes on, it looks like we will have some extra funds in our SPOSS account. Certainly, I would much rather use someone else's dollar, no doubt about that. So I can cover that. And then also for my T-SPOSS fund, you know, if that's the commission decision, we can certainly address some of those funds to help with some of those roads that were not as high on the radar but may require our attention. So those things at our disposal. But sort of talking to our representatives and our congressman about that. And once again, we want to be first in line when they start divvying out funds for. So just help us with that, we will too, Mr. Long. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Obviously. Glad to do that. Becky Street, Olive Street, those are pretty much done. We've done final inspection with them. Paper request should be coming out and finishing that up this month. Palm Drive and Point South Drive.
Excuse me. And that, Becky and Olive, and it was, what was the other street off Olive? It was Cheridale and Stafford?
Yes, Cheridale and Stafford. Those are two intersections.
Yeah, right. Okay, okay.
It's just, it gets kind of long when you're putting all the intersections in there. So the Palm Drive and the Point South Drive contractor is still in his contract period. It's not gonna take that long to fix it, but he hasn't come to the site. And we are talking to him regularly about making sure that site gets finished or digged on it and that they get completed before their construction end date. Because it's gonna be hard at this point to give them extensions. The Recreation Department ADA accessibility, he's doing really good. He is a little over his contract period, but we did have some material delivery delays with some pipes and flared end sections. And he had a pretty significant number of rain days during this period. So, you know, we've given him the rain days and some of his delays. So he's not completely out of time, but he is nearly finished with that. Liberty County Transfer Station, this is something I need to kind of point out. And something happened today. We've, I don't know if anybody's been on the tipping floor, but when you go up there, they dump the trash on the floor and then they push it over into the tops of the trucks. And as you push it off the tops of the trucks, there are these steel chutes that act like a funnel to make it go down into the truck. Those chutes are failing and falling apart. And we did a set of plans, and one side right now has failed completely. So we're down to one side of operation. So we had a quick emergency trying to get bids on this project. We did sell about three sets of plans, talked to the guy that did the repairs last time. He was not interested in coming to do the whole rebuild that we've got. And several people thought we're interested, but nobody showed up today to put in a bid. So, and everybody citing the delays and the delivery of steel. So we're doing some investigation, trying to see if we can't find some more people that are interested in doing that workforce to get that going. I talked to Clinton about it this afternoon, and he's also trying to help look to figure out a way to get somebody to help us do that work.
So can we still function?
He's functioning right now.
Yeah.
So it's just not at 100%.
Okay. Now, should that have been a maintenance item for?
Well, he's been maintaining it.
Yeah.
Over the years. And actually, he got somebody to come down and try to give him a quote a couple of months, about a month or so ago. And it was well more than $100,000. So it kind of put it into a bidding process. And that was before it failed. And since we started going to bidding processes.
Getting the other, okay. Keep us posted.
Yes, sir. I certainly will. But y'all just need to know that was going on.
Yeah.
The last thing I want to talk about tonight, and this was actually on the front sheet of my report, and it's the last 16 pages or 15 pages of the monthly report I sent to you, is the post-construction ordinance. So need to have a little lesson about what post-construction is for terms of our stormwater MPDES permit as far as this ordinance is concerned. Your common sense is gonna say, post-construction is when you go out, it's the pipe you put in the ground, it's the catch basin you put in, it's the drainage well you put in. It's not. But post-construction is, in terms of stormwater management, is your stormwater pond. So if you, in your mind, take the word pond every time you see post-construction, the word pond, and that's what this is talking about. It's kind of a harder concept. And it's, it took me a while to grasp it. Because when we first started this program, we were in it five years, and I was doing the same thing. I was, when we were reporting for post-construction activities, I was reporting all the pipes, all the catch basins, and everything that you would normally think is post-construction. And finally, when one of the girls came down for an audit, she said, no, this means pond. And it just takes a while. So everything that's included in this ordinance, we've been doing for years. But EPD wants us to, and some of this post-construction ordinance information is already in our drainage ordinance and our erosion control ordinance. But they want it to be standalone. So what we did is we pulled it out, made it standalone, used their models, and basically tweaked it so that it matches how we're functioning now. The only thing that we're not functioning really well with that this helps with is stormwater management agreements. When somebody does a commercial facility in our urbanized area, they're supposed to be signing a stormwater maintenance agreement. They do it in the city of Hinesville, Flemington, all over already. Same agreement that they're signing in all these cities. They just need to sign that for Liberty County as well. And what that agreement says is that the person building this stormwater pond, post-construction facility, is going to maintain that facility. And that the county has a right to inspect it and compel them to clean it and maintain and do what they need to do. Now, we already have in place, things we're already doing. There is an enforcement response plan of the steps we go through in case somebody fails to manage their stormwater pond. We are, it's a list, and we have certain steps we go through. It's a whole chart. It takes up a big old piece of paper. But it's what we do already. So there's nothing really new in this over what we're doing. It's just separate. So I need to take action on it as soon as I can. But I wanted to bring it to you tonight. So you had a chance to look at it. If you wanted to read it and ask me any questions, please do so. Because there are a lot of things in it that, you may say, what does this mean? Because sometimes it is hard to understand. But I want to make sure that I answer your questions and make sure that you're comfortable with this. I'm not saying, hey, I want you to adopt this ordinance tonight. But I do need you to look at it. And we do need to take the steps to adopt this so that we stay in compliance with our stormwater MPDES permit.
I do have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
Trent, when you were saying like the maintenance and inspections, let's say in the unincorporated area, because as you just said, the cities already have their own.
Yes.
But in the unincorporated area, let's say someone builds a development in the county.
Yes, sir.
And then the inspections and the maintenance and everything, would that fall on a homeowners' association?
Yes.
And we know how, you know, they're good for the first 29 days, and then after that, you know.
Good as long as the developer's still a homeowners' association.
But so that's who would be responsible.
Yes, sir.
For the upkeep. And we would do the inspections.
Yes, sir. That's right. Yeah, we're not, we're not trying to bring any more maintenance responsibility on the county.
On the county, yeah.
We want to keep as much off of the county as we can.
But we would inspect it. And if it's something that need to be brought up to...
And for all, we're actually already inspecting most of these that are in the urbanized area. You know, what we do right now is we kind of limit this activity to the urbanized area of Liberty County. So it doesn't hit like all the way out of Colonel's Island. But this will make it apply to the entire county, which is what EPD wants us to do. But there's not a lot of facilities that we have to inspect and maintain. It's not a darn big ask.
Well, I mean, we are building some subdivisions in the unincorporated area of the county. Bell Carter Road, Isle of Wight.
Yes, sir.
And if they fall into this, and if there's a homeowners' association, which is, again, I said, I exaggerated when I said the first 29 days. I mean, for a few years.
That's a long time.
And then, and then after that, they just, you know, there's no one there. You know, you, there's no one you can call in. The partner's just there. And it's got to function. It's got to be inspected. It's got to be maintained. But if the homeowners' association is, disappears, then...
It's hard. Yeah. That is, that is a real problem.
But we don't, we don't, like you said, we don't want it to fall on Clinton and his guys either. So.
Yes, sir. We don't.
I don't know how we could.
It does. It becomes a real issue.
That that doesn't happen. Right.
Yeah, we, with that, I noticed there was a little narrative you had in there about discharging into the Pomona Lake. And that's gonna be, I mean, that's a private.
Yes.
It's property.
Yes, we have several discharges that discharge our public water into Pomona Lake.
Well, then if you have a subdivision that's built down there, Trent, what do you do with, that's, that causes an issue. That's kind of like, you know, we had discussed this sometime last year with regard to the growth in the Flemington area and the Hines State. When it rains now, the Goshen Canal is, I mean, is muddy. And that's because it's coming out of those retention ponds. But, I mean, who are we gonna have to police it besides MPD? I mean, there's, how many engineers you got here? You got three, two counting without you, and then there's three engineers. So who are we gonna get to go in there and make sure that that guy's doing the right thing? Will that fall on the county engineer? Or will that fall, do we need to have somebody that's gonna be from the outside saying, part of this is right and part of this is wrong? I mean, you know, in politics, there's people that want to try to get by with a little bit. And more and more, yeah. And that's why I'm saying, you've got some of the subdivisions. And to be real honest with you, and I've known you a long time, I don't believe you'd want to be policing yourself. And that's, that's what we want to try to do here. The Goshen is gonna be an issue, and you know that. I mean, the retention ponds that's back there now, I mean, they're, when it rains two inches, they're full. And that's gonna be in a municipality, from what I'm understanding.
So...
The new subdivision back on opposite side of gravel hill, behind the old Bruton Parker.
Oh, no, that's, that's city of Flemington.
Okay. But who's gonna...
So I'm trying to tell you how it all works and who is responsible for inspections and saying some of that. So in the city of Flemington, the LCPC is the one that does those inspections. The LCPC also does the post-construction pond inspections for the annual insurance to make sure that it works. Now, in the incorporated Liberty County, Paul Zekman has the main inspection and enforcement responsibilities for development. When he needs help, he calls me and I go helping him. Now, one thing that we do as part of the stormwater maintenance program, we do inspect the post-construction ponds, and we inspect all our pipes. And we do the inspections that are associated with the stormwater management program to make sure that we're all in compliance. So what we don't, what I don't do is, you know, I had a few subdivisions, like Habersham, that I started before we took back over. That would be my responsibility to manage those that we're finishing out. But we don't have any new subdivisions that we are in that position for. So that should not occur as time goes along, except for, you know, what we got in Flemington, the LCPC is inspector for. So what I try not to do is try not to put myself in a position where I'm inspecting myself. Because that's, that's not good for either one of us.
No. The, the one issue that we're seeing, the excess rainfall coming under 84. And that's impacting that big time. So, you know, you've got to have the retention upstream. And if you don't, then, you know, we're the ones that's gonna get...
Yes, sir. And, you know, there are several things that I think as a county we could do better. Not necessarily just me, but, you know, also developers and home builders as far as managing our erosion control, because that does become a problem. You know, as you're going, a lot of times as you're going through the construction process and you're getting the infrastructure built, we've got a lot of mechanisms in place where that part of it, the erosion control, does okay. But once it gets a little further where they're building homes and there's decentralized control on it, you know, then the subs really do a lot of tracking and damage to the stormwater. Gets, a lot of stuff gets running off, starts running off. And that does become an issue for us. So, yes, sir, we, you know, this, erosion control is a battle. It's a real battle.
Oh, yeah. And I remember having to deal with it at my other job. I mean, everybody had to have a green card, a blue card, a red card. It felt like you were playing dominoes sometimes. But...
You're right.
I do, just to make sure, and that'd be noted in the record, that we, I don't know that it's a great idea for us. And you've already agreed for us to police ourselves and stuff like that right there. Let's do what we can, because all we gotta do is build something upstream that blows out 84. And they're gonna say, hey, guys, when it comes over the highway, that's when you know. And, you know, I was there with the DOT looking at a project there for Commissioner Stevens on Tyson Road. And the guy was standing there and there was this much dirt in the covers. And he said, well, you know, as long as you got part of them opened up, that's fine. Well, then you ought to build it half that big if it was part of it to be opened up. So, but anyhow, that's my two cents, Mr. Chairman.
All right, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
And the water.
Mr. Long, no, Yilmun Road is complete, right?
Yes, sir. They still have, I mean, they're pretty much, they've got it substantially complete. We haven't turned them loose, because we still have some erosion and we still have some grass that needs to get going. And we got them coming back and forth.
How about the dirt in the box cover? Did they get most of it out?
Yes, sir. They got, I don't, I haven't been back to look at the dirt in the box cover. But not, there's not a box cover, but in the catch basins, they gotta get those planted.
Okay. Bill Carter Road, we are on...
Yes, sir. I pretty much finished the plans yesterday. So I hope to have it in the paper either first part of, probably the Wednesday after Thanksgiving.
Okay. Question. Bill Carter Road is a clay-based, like a clay, I call it a clay-based road. Is it, how much more, what's gonna be the depth of it now with that clay-based road?
Yes.
Is it gonna be different from a rock-based road, thicker?
It'll be, we're gonna do it very similar to what we did Barrington Ferry Road, except I'm not gonna strip the top of the asphalt off of it. Basically, what they'll do is to envision this, they'll come out with cement trucks. So we'll have to kind of close it down or lanes of it during the day when they're doing this. They bring the dry cement, like you see, that's just really powdery.
Right.
And they'll put a layer of cement on the road. It's gonna be about two inches thick.
Okay.
And they have a machine that comes through and it just...
Grinds it in.
...overizes it. And then right behind it, they're mixing it and compacting it. And then that concrete sets up into a, more or less a soil-cement base.
Okay.
And it becomes very hard. You know, gives you the same structural strength that the granite that we put under the road does. And then we'll come back with three and a half inches of asphalt on top of that.
So we're looking at about five to six inches. Okay.
Now, that soil-cement is eight inches thick.
Eight inches?
What is that?
So by the time we're said and done.
Off the road, is that?
Yeah, now, it's, it's not like, it's not all eight inches up.
It's gonna be down?
It's all down. Yeah, it's all just mixed into the ground. And it's, you know, it doesn't change the elevation very much at all.
Okay. Now, just for the record, you, we won't dispel, just a little bit, you have made some progress with the water at the Trade Hill area.
Yes. Yes, sir. I had a good meeting with one of the property owners today. Got to get some appraisals done for anisement. And hopefully, we are on our way to having that resolved.
Okay. The subdivision list that I requested.
Yes, sir.
Who has it?
I do.
Can I get it? Have you?
Yes, sir. I think what we'll do is, is I'll make a note of that. If you're just going to submit that out to the commission.
I'm glad.
It'll be fine. Just send it out from under.
I'll go send it out here in just a few minutes.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. The Gum Branch Convenience Center?
Yes, ma'am.
Where's that?
It is, I have not put it in the paper yet. I had a couple of grades I needed to change. So I've changed those this week. So I'm hoping to have that in the paper Wednesday or either very, very shortly.
Okay.
I'm like 95% done. I just needed to, something didn't work right. So I had to go back and make sure I had it working right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
One thing I don't like is to get out on the job site and the contractor finds something that's not working.
No, we don't want that.
Then it costs us all.
Real quickly, a couple of the projects he's working on too, and they involve grading, is for the EMS station down at the Development Park in Midway. And so his crew's staking that so that Clint can go ahead in there, cut down, take out the vegetation. He's got to take out and go back in with the fill, because our project's gonna be bidding in December. So we want to get that done and get the fills started. And the other is, is doing some staking and surveying for the potential health department site up here on Martin Luther King. So a couple other, a couple of the projects I've got him working on that are associated with your capital projects.
And I think, I hadn't checked with the crews today, but they're supposed to finish the health department site today. And it's on schedule to stake the clearing to... and it's scheduled to stake the clearing tomorrow. Good to.
All right.
I, I got one thing I'd like to add, put on your list, and Joey, you can help him because you won't be having to walk that far. You can meet him halfway, but let's look at this parking lot that we've got out here. Um, I, I can see some issues in and out, handicap parking that may be over here and lighting and restriping or whatever.
Really mostly talking about this side over here? Talking about this, this parking on this side?
Uh, I prefer you look at all of it.
Okay.
We can, and we, we can, and I, just as a quick snapshot, you may remember we had to pull back a couple of projects that were already designed that allowed for flows in and flows out over there. He's got. We can definitely do that. Look at that lot yesterday.
Get Miss Michelle back there. She may have a little, maybe want to put a button.
Definitely will.
She has an impossible task, doesn't she?
Just include it. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Long.
Thank you all very much.
That happened to be in my district at one time.
Let the dust settle, let the dust settle.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. In government support agreement, Mr. Mobley is coming now. Good to see him. Um, since you've seen him last, his position has changed and I don't want to butcher it. Uh, if I, if I have it right, just correct me, please, sir. The whole world's looking. The Assistant Garrison Commander for Hunter Army Airfield.
Close enough, sir.
Close enough?
Close enough, Chairman. So, Deputy to the Garrison Commander.
Deputy to the Garrison, okay.
So, very, very close.
Proud of you, sir.
Yeah, well, I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
I'm proud of you, too.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, uh, Colonel Miras sends his regards. So, he said, thank you for the invite.
Yes, sir. You for being here.
With that said, so I just want to talk to you all a little bit just about intergovernmental support agreements. And so, one of the things we've been championing here across the Installation Management Command, which is the command that manages all of the, uh, the, basically the city-county management of our army installations, is intergovernmental support agreements where we essentially look for municipalities, uh, state agencies to become our partners in the work. So, uh, in, in simplest of terms, it's taking a contract that we currently have or we have, we've used in the past or a bona fide need and we've actually gone out to our partners and asked them, hey, would, would you like to partner in us, you becoming our provider for that particular service area? So, these are, these are ten-year agreements, or they can go up to ten years. Uh, this is in the National Defense Authorization Act and we've, we started these a couple of years ago. Right now, we've, and we have one with the county already. We're doing our post and pre-trial confinement and that was something that was already in place. We did a simple conversion over. And, but right now, we're asking the county to take a look at some of our rural areas. So, we, we do design work out in our, in our training ranges. So, for, essentially, we're looking at the possibility of the county considering doing, uh, being compensated for the service, but basically doing our, our design work for our, uh, basically our navigation in our training area. So, our, our low-water crossings for the primary thing. So, so these design works currently, we do, we go through a contracting mechanism that is quite, uh, cumbersome to the employees on the installation. It's also, uh, possibly, we're, we're finding cost savings in, in going out to the counties and the, the cities. Uh, we've actually been able to keep approximately almost twenty-nine million dollars locally with these, with these counties and municipalities. And so, right now, we're going out to the county though. For this particular one, we're asking Liberty County to look at, uh, because we'd like to essentially become a partner and provide that design, ask for the design work to come from the county with a compensated, a, a negotiated compensation package uh, that essentially takes our requirements. The county gives us a number. Obviously, the county makes a little money on this deal as well. So, it becomes a revenue stream for the county. But again, it's, it's subject to the availability of funds. Like I say, that's what makes it wonderful with a ten-year agreement. We can go into this thing from the, from the beginning and these requirements that we have for these particular projects are about two to three years out in, out in the long run. So, we kind of know what we got coming. We start to go ahead and plan it now for the future. Um, but we, like I say, we, we're trying to focus on Liberty County with this one just because we, we know that it is, uh, we've already got one agreement in place. But these are just type, type of things that we're already discussing here in these meetings. And so, on the installation, we'd like to become better partners. And, and why is this important for the community? As we talk about keeping, um, the economy driven by a lot of, like, by the installation being one of our primary drivers in the state, um, we, we want to, the National Defense Authorization Act, some of the proposals is, is how do they determine whether their stationing actions are taking place with units coming to the installation? Part of that consideration in the future is how well are you partnering with your local governments? And so, right now, we've got, uh, six agreements in place with five different government entities. And so, this, this has been proven to be successful. It is new, so it's all, it's one of those things when you start cross-talking, a lot of folks do not have it. Um, it was actually championed out in Monterey in California when they took over all of their operations and maintenance. That kind of started the program and they said, hey, why can't we do this somewhere else? And so, it's, it's, finally it was adopted across the board and here we are today, um, setting the pace for most of the Installation Management Command. So, we're running at the top of those number of agreements in place and we're steady pushing all the time. And so, it becomes a business, uh, on our side of the house whereas, uh, we may ask, you know, Liberty County, we may go to Bryan, we may go to Chatham. And so, I said, we have five different, uh, five separate agencies that we're doing business with right now with six, six agreements total, uh, with five different partners, including, like I say, Liberty's one of them. So, um, we're, we're looking, like I say, for the county to consider entering negotiations to essentially us providing the statement of work, county deciding whether, hey, this is something we possibly want to pursue and then negotiating, hey, what would that actually cost us? And we negotiate a price. Instead of sending our money to, you know, wherever it may be, all that money stays local. So, the, the services that, that would be provided, they can either be existing with the county or they can be, uh, picked up in a, a different process, however the county determines. That's, that's obviously up to the county on how they determine where that work goes towards. But, uh, this is something we'd like to, for the county to consider and, uh, again, keep money local, keep a partnership agreements, uh, moving forward as we try and look at making Fort Stewart and Hunter Army Airfield basically the, uh, the army's home. So, subject to your questions.
Mr. Brown, what's, what's your first take on this request? I know the city of Heinzville, you guys provide the?
The grounds maintenance, uh, at Fort, at Fort Stewart and Hunter.
And that Long County provides animal control, am I right?
They do, sir. So, they provide animal control and, uh, and actually the new animal control facility you see on eighty-four is a direct result of the partnership.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Did the army participate in the building of that or just the, the funds that come as a result of them providing that service?
The funds, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, we did not, we do not get into this construction aspect.
Must have been a pretty good contract, yeah.
So, on analysis, i- it's basically the engineering services that are related to that land management rehab program. Again, a- as Travis mentioned, for the range, any, any kind of, um, um, surface work, basically civil work that needs to be done on the range complexes or more commonly the, the low-water crossings. Uh, those on an average, uh, run two to three projects a year. Um, they're not real complex projects. So, uh, there's not an inordinate amount of time that's required, but it's basically from some civil design or engineering standpoint and then, uh, construction management of the, of that activity reports that are required, uh, back to the military. So, I definitely think it's something we, we ought to consider. I mean, I, for several reasons.
Commissioners, what do you?
The areas that buffer around Fort Stewart, which would maybe be places of two and three hundred acres. Excuse me. I know, uh, folks that have been approached about putting their land in conservation or stuff like that, but there is a, a lot of property that borders, uh, some of the state routes, one nineteen and one forty-four, that would be closer to Pembroke and probably closer to Glenville that is not being used. It's too close to houses to have any type of shooting range. Uh, I think the only thing I've ever seen out there might have been a fire tower. But would, would those particular tracts of acreage of fifty or maybe even a hundred acres, could you put, with it being on a federal installation, could you put a, um, I'm thinking of coal storage right now because, I mean, you know, we had the ice plant and I know Fort Stewart's got its own, uh, you know, coal storage and stuff like that. But if you had that on that end of Long County and Tappanoe County, you could utilize the property. It would benefit Long County and Tappanoe County because you could have a work pool that's there and then upkeep the property. That's why I was wondering, you know, you, it's not what you would call surplus because I don't believe the federal government has bought anything and added it to Fort Stewart since they bought it in the forties. I mean, it's still the same land mass, but that particular place. Um, I'm just thinking what it would do, Travis, to bring more, um, you know, labor to, to our area to, to work and plus it would help some of these other, you know, other counties. You just mentioned Long County, I mean, with the animal controls. But as far as, you know, we're, we're sitting at, I was wondering, you know, we, we've just discussed the impact of water and we all know it comes from the Peacock, the Goshen and wherever, Taylor's Creek, and then it goes right through and then goes to the ocean. Some of it goes the other way. Could we utilize and work with engineering services that we could build pretty good sized retention areas on the base that would help some of our area from becoming flooded?
Without, without speaking out of my lane, like I say, with wetland credits and whatnot with our environmental department, who is, which is actually just was awarded the Department of Defense, like I say, they're number one environmental department in the army and DOD, sorry. Um, I think there's always possibilities to enter in those discussions and see should something become available. Uh, we're never standing apart from having those conversations. Uh, I would let the expert obviously defer to those rules and regulations, but. I'm, I'm a, I'm a, like I said, I'm a negotiator, I would say, in some aspects, but unfortunately, I still get the same check. I'm not getting any commission off of that thing. So, I'm here as a good steward of federal taxpayer dollars as I try and save every, all of one of us a, a, a simple penny.
I just remember Commissioner Gilligan talking about what they were doing, you know, with some of their employees at ESG and I just was thinking, you know, it's, it created jobs.
Yes, sir.
Now, it sees them all, do whatever, you can call it whatever you want to, but, you know, you've got to decide what's going to be something that Fort Stewart needs, whether it's boot strings or whatever. Keep from having to bring it, I mean, there's such an issue now with, you know, getting something built and then bringing it to the port. I mean, the man's in flip flops before he can get his strings to go in his boots. So, I'm just, um, you just wondered, you know, is there anything that can be done on, you know, in that area right there?
Yeah, sir, there's some, like I say, we've had some conversations with some of the surrounding counties on, on, you know, the feasibility of the land use and whatnot. As you mentioned, like the army compatible use buff, buffer program, which we actually just rewarded some more grant money through the Alabama Land Trust, Georgia-Alabama Land Trust. And so, that was a big win. We just received word on here in the last couple of days as we try and continue to protect the corridor, uh, going all the way through the Townsend bombing range entering from the port. So, we're always trying to look at, hey, the, our number one goal is obviously to make sure that our soldiers are trained and ready to go to the nation's fight. Um, and so, whatever that may be, whatever discussions we have, that's the ultimate goal and we just have to make, keep that always into consideration. But in the end, we want to make sure that communities are supported um, to make sure that those enablers are there to provide that, so.
Well, I mean, you know, when you take five hundred acres off the tax books and, you know, and, and you could maybe put some type of manufacturing, um, area there that would create jobs, you're, you know, twofold.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, we've had, we have some, you know, there's some public-private venture programs out there that across the army. I think Redstone Arsenal is probably a good example of it where they have some land that's, you know, extracted off of the federal side and then actually the, the public or pri, the private entities actually have a, you know, have an easement and then they take, and then they use it for developmental purposes. But, so there are options out there. It's just there, like I say, with the, with the restrictions in mind and ensuring that the training areas remain intact to do training and we try and make sure that we're not becoming bad neighbors on the other side, you know, the fence. Um, that's always the key thing. So, encroachment and that's why, like I say, that army compatible use buffer program, that's a key thing for us. And, and not just the installation, but like I said, Mac, you know, all the way that corridor down the Altima Hall, all the way exiting back to the ocean, like I say, that's, but there's always possibility. So, there's some programs in place, but there's a lot of hurdles to get there, to get to the end state, you know, to include those developers that would be willing to put in, you know, put in something as well.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Excuse me. Mr. Brown, would that be something that, uh, this design he's talking about now, is that something that we would work with Mr. Long's office with?
Probably so.
Through the county, through the county and then it'd filter down to the engineering? Okay. I appreciate it.
All of our dealings go directly with the county.
To the county, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we welcome that. Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Well, and, and I guess my question, when would we, I mean, I, I think we all for it, but, um, when, when do we start talking about? How do we start?
If the board, and I'm going to come back to what Travis said, I think, and you correct me if I go wrong. So, if, uh, if the board authorizes a statement of work to be produced and to move forward, there'd be a statement of work set out, uh, with a potential contract and specify the, the what-ifs and the amounts and some of those things. I think that's the next thing we would do is, is you'd authorize us to develop that draft and bring it back to the board for your consideration and adoption.
Okay.
And once we become with a negotiated, pretty much a, hey, we agree upon the services, we agree upon the price, then we essentially send that up to a higher headquarters for approval. So, locally, we're not able to approve that. So, it goes up to a higher based on the dollar threshold and, uh, the, the approval process takes anywhere between two and three months to get locked in and a hundred percent ready to go. But the, you know, the longer part is just that negotiation process to make sure that, that everybody's good from the services and, and the, the pricing strategy and whatnot, so.
Joey, you, you said it would come through our engineer. Now, Travis, it's just part, would it just be Liberty County? I mean, or whoever is signed on the dotted line, they'll look after Liberty, Long, Bryan, Scott, Evans and everything that is inside the.
Anything inside the, the installation between Fort Stewart and Hunter Army Airfield. So, so these agreements allow, they don't restrict you just to the county proper. So, in theory, I go to Washington State and enter into the same agreement. As long as it's open negotiation, that's the favorable part for us for the installation. It's sitting across the table from a partner and, and going through the line items and actually working out the details versus here's a, here's a sealed, you know, statement of work and all of a sudden you get something back and you're kind of stuck with it and you got to live with it. So, this is, that's the beauty of it.
I mean, what you're, the engineer would definitely have to have some resources to.
Certainly.
Yeah.
And there will be compensation for those services, so.
Yes, sir. Yep, absolutely.
All right. All right, let's move.
Chairman, you need a motion? Do we need a motion?
Sure.
To offer, okay, Ms. Chairman, I would make a motion that we enter with the statement of work. We give, um, Mr. Brown the authority to go ahead and proceed forward. Proceed.
In, in prettier words, yeah. In a second.
Second.
Motion, second, we proceed within the government support agreement. It's, it's been introduced to us and we look forward to it. And thank you for thinking of Liberty County. Thank you for bringing.
Thank you all for having us. We appreciate it, so.
Let's, let's do it. All in favor, all in favor. All right, Mr. Long. Thank you, Travis. Good to see you. Congratulations again on your new position. All right.
Did he give you a star or anything?
I invite this next young lady, you know, I guess you guys can see over to our, whatever direction that there's work going on. I know there are things going on downtown, some of them we don't know. And sometimes the, the, I'm sorry to say, the commission gets credit for some things we're not even doing sometimes.
We're all on the same team.
Yes, I wanted to just kind of have an update from you, what's going on. I know Commissioner Gilligan gets to hear because he's at the, at the city council meetings, but we aren't there, so we don't get to, we aren't privy to that information. So, if you just share with us what's going on, so we'll be in the know. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Glad to be with you. Um, just, I guess for camera land, I'm Michelle Ricketson. I'm the executive director of the Heinzville Downtown Development Authority and very thankful for our community partnerships, um, with the city and the county because you are a partner with us in, in several things. Um, this is just a list of who is, who's on the board, who do I report to? Um, everybody from John Baker, Alan, Mayor Alan Brown, Roger Jones, um, Shonda Michael, Sabrina Newby, Tom Radcliffe and Marcus Sack is our current board chairman. Um, we are, the HDDA is a staff of mighty three and one of the biggest projects that has just happened in 2021 is a revolving loan fund. And one of the biggest projects that has just happened in 2021 is a revolving loan fund. Um, it's called Discover Downtown Heinzville. And the thought is that it would be flexible expedient access to funds to help close a deal, gap financing, um, whether it is the purchase of land or building. Um, there will be some emphasis certainly given to permanent jobs, to restaurants and retail in downtown or cultural experiences. We have worked, um, helped folks with a few buildings. Uh, we've got some new windows on Commerce Street, paint on MLK, and some signage and windows and other things on Memorial Drive. And the Donovan's did a super job with what I call the old washeteria. Everybody else says it's a laundromat, call it the washeteria. And, um, they are doing some amazing, amazing things with kids and helping them with occupational therapy and speech therapy. Um, we also work with city and county partners. And one of your Keep Liberty Beautiful staff is there with the kids. We planted an orchard at Bryant Commons this year for Arbor Day. And so we had, um, a couple lemons. Um, we didn't have any of our oranges get to size or the, the lime, but. Then the other project, other project that we've been working on, this might not be the right slide for the nation, um, is Gap Park. And that's that space between the Labor Building that you own, um, where the theater fell and Merritt and Grinstead. It's been the home of our farmer's market for this year because of the construction at Bradwell Park. And, um, we have been able to save, um, some of the plant material from Bradwell Park, some of the pavers, we went around and scavenged and took them out to Bryant Commons. So, um, gardenias and day lilies now, um, surround the playground. So kids are going to see those and hopefully butterflies and birds. Uh, we are an accredited Main Street program and, um, it is our sixth year of earning that designation. And what that really means is two things. One, we keep, it means we keep statistics. As a Main Street program, we are required to report how many businesses opened, how many closed, how many new jobs, how many jobs gained, jobs lost, et cetera. Um, and so we're keeping data, we're keeping watch on, on that. Um, also what it means is that when folks are opening, wanting to open a business or wanting to get a loan from, say, the Georgia Cities Foundation or a state agency with DCA, excuse me. Um, they are applying for low interest money through the state or through the Georgia Cities Foundation, but they get 1% lower on a low interest loan because we're an accredited Main Street community. So that helps those businesses that are trying to start out. Even if you got a low interest loan, 1% lower is, can really be a help. So I talked to you about numbers just a second ago. Um, this is the stats for 2020 and the first eight months of 2021, um, in downtown. And that is the triangle. So General Stewart, General Scriven, 84, up to the, the post. So in 2020, um, even though it was a dismal year for a lot of folks, um, in downtown, we were a net plus five businesses and plus 52 jobs. Um, the investment both, um, in commercial purchases and rehabs and all of that was 5.2 million. And so far this year, um, in the first eight months, we've had, we're plus 28 businesses, plus 114 jobs. And, um, the investment thus far is 6.5 million. And I will say between the 2020 and 2021, um, a big chunk of that is the apartment complex on Memorial Drive that went in. So just, but you know, uh, event wise, you know, 2020, we, um, had a lower number of events in downtown and with several cancellations, we didn't, we have not been tracking cancellations in 2021, but, um, we did try to track them a little bit in 2022 because the pandemic was so new. I guess we were, we weren't shell shocked anymore, so we just rolled with it. Historic preservation is another function of the HDDA. And I know that's near and dear to the chairman's heart. Um, so I am proud to report that the Historic Preservation Committee for the city has been active, um, for the past year plus. And we work with the county commission's Cultural and Historic Resources Committee. Um, we tell each other what's going on, if they need volunteers, the HPC tries to help. When the HPC is working on something, we call on the Cultural and Historic Resources Committee to say, come, come play with us, come, let's, let's educate folks about history. Of course, this shot from May is us cutting the ribbon on the jail fence, something that was talked about for 20 years and we finally got it back up. So thank you, thank you, thank you, uh, for your help and the help from Splosh to finish that project. Um, we also have a new arrangement. Um, you may see open signs at the jail at different times and different days of the week, but, um, or have noticed that. So we've made, um, an arrangement with the local artist guild, the Liberty Melting Pot of Art. And they learned the history of the jail and they serve as docents, um, usually Wednesday through Saturday from 10 to 2. So the jail is open for tours then and, um, in exchange for place to hang their art. And 10% of any art sold that, but in the jail comes back. And that helps pay the extra utilities for just having extra lights and air conditioning. And more folks are, we're seeing higher visitation numbers at the jail, so we're glad about that. We also wanted to do, we did in the spring, a walking tour of our historic markers. And we've identified, um, the century old properties. Anybody want to take a guess how many historic markers we have in downtown? It takes more than two hands, I'll tell you that. We have a dozen historic markers. Anybody want to guess how many hundred year old structures we have in downtown? It'll surprise you. 24.
Wow.
So, um, no, we don't have this, the, the same historic stock of Savannah or Millidgeville or Thomasville, but, um, we do have some quality and some neat structures. And so we will be working on a tour. We wanted to do it in November and there just was so much going on that we've pushed it back to February to be in line with the, um, Georgia, the Super Museum Sunday. And so we'll do another walking tour in the, in the spring or late winter of those, um, of those sites. And we were, are going to surround the historic courthouse. And we're going to also teach folks a little bit about architecture so that they can appreciate when they're buying a structure downtown, what era it might be. I mean, it may be just the American small house, it might be a 1970s ranch. And I guess we can find something positive about that. Um, it may be, um, you know, a 50s bungalow that's really cool, but just helping people identify. And then, um, the sixth point, we are super excited about a partnership with our local school district that is now offering a film class. And so we are working with the film students at, in, um, out on Airport Road for mini marker movies.
We're academy.
And so what they're doing is they are helping us tell stories. Um, we've got such rich history in Liberty County. And so, um, they are going to help us do snippets that are 60 to 90 second long about each of our historic markers. And they're also going to help us do two to three minute clips on each of those historic markers. They're starting with the 12 markers in downtown. But Randy Branch and I did this, um, we've virtually met with a first grade class. And he was at one marker and I was at another. And so while he talked, I got in position. And as soon as he finished, I was with my phone and I showed him Carlton Heinz's house and whatnot. While I'm talking about that, he came from one side of the courthouse to the other. And then he was ready to talk about the canon. And while he talked about the canon, I went to the Methodist church. So we, um, we buzzed around and thought, hmm, okay, there's, there's a neat thing that can happen here. And talked to the school district and they are a hundred percent on board. So by May, we should have snippets of each of the markers in downtown that can come together and be a lesson plan for teachers that they can call up on a YouTube channel or something and have local history that, and they're telling Liberty County stories in the classroom. And, um, it'll be produced by our local students. So the upperclassmen are relearning that history that maybe once they knew and forgot. And the young students are coming up, learning that, um, at an earlier age. So the, the short snippets will really be something that can hold the attention of an elementary student. The two to three minute clip per site will be, um, aimed at middle school and high school. So, um, those are, we are super excited about that. Bryant Commons, another love, um, that we have in common. Um, of course, like the, the county parks, Bryant Commons was closed for a while, the playground, the dog park, all of that. Um, but we're, we're fully open again. Um, we did, thanks to Splosh, we added, uh, well, actually that wasn't Splosh. We added 30 tons of pea gravel to the dog park for easier maintenance and sanitation. Um, we wanted folks to be able to spray down the puppies if they got muddy and that kind of thing. So we're still working on the last, getting the last gravel in there. And then, um, Splosh did help us with, um, almost $10,000 of some crush and run and that we used for road repairs and some erosion issues that we were having at the park. And, um, I've got $300 left to spend of my $10,000 if I can turn my paperwork in. And, and, but we just tried real hard not to get the load over too much, so, um, for dollars. So I've got $300 left to spend, but we've got much better roads because of that and can always use more assistance. Um, teapads and signage, we've got the first nine holes of disc golf there. Uh, we have plans for how another nine holes will fit between, um, the spillway and the first big bridge. Then, uh, beyond the bridge, as you're coming back toward the amphitheater, we hope to get 18 holes there as well. So, um, we hope that we will have two full 18 hole disc golf courses onsite and be able to offer tournament play. And that in conjunction with the, the baskets that are at James Brown Park, um, we can really begin hopefully to, to invite larger groups of folks to come and play disc golf locally. We also, of course, um, I already talked about, we were able to reuse the plants, um, from downtown to the playground. And we're working on a big maintenance plan for the 156 acre park. That's just a, a quick note about, um, in spite of COVID, uh, we were able to do some things like farmer's markets with signs and extra hand sanitizer on the tables. Um, pumpkin patch became pumpkin roll, scarecrow stroll became scarecrow, small ST, big roll. Um, and this year we combined those fall events into one just because our numbers weren't real great when it was time for planning. Um, then some Easter things, some sipping shops, um, homegrown handmade holiday markets. And we're already back to those again. We've got the first one of the three this weekend. And we'll be in the Gap Park and the big parking lot, uh, behind the Courier and, and New and Not, um, with 27, no, 20, 29 yard sale vendors and, uh, about 20 artisan vendors on Saturday. We did convert our Small World Festival into a scavenger hunt because we couldn't have a festival last spring. So we're hoping that will be good for next spring. Um, and we've also done downtown supplies teachers, trying to make sure that all the classrooms, um, where there's a need for school supplies, that folks have access to that. And, um, we've done backpacks for our homeless students in a partnership with Target and J.C. Lewis Ford. We've done some army birthday parties. Um, we're getting back to shop small, um, again, and, um, our peanut butter and jelly drives. And, um, and we've just had such great support for peanut butter and jelly for the manor house. And, um, we have collected, um, this past year we collected 3,400. Um, and that was the second best in the seven years that we've done it. And so, and the, the collections, we added up the total number of jars and it equaled about $42,000 in peanut butter and jelly in seven years. And 250,000 sandwiches could be made, um, that amount of peanut butter and jelly, so. So there you go. That's what's happening at the DDA. Any questions?
Before you leave, just give us the timeline for Bradwell Park.
So, um, our hope is that they will be finished, um, by the end of the year or the first of January. They were a little bit behind, but they've been, they've had some hustle in their step lately, so. We're all hopeful, Chairman.
I understand.
Michelle, I have a question for the chair.
Yes, sir.
The, the city, uh, you know, they mentioned it at the council meeting today about Hindsaw. So, um, and I'll, I'll talk with you.
Okay.
About that, you know, because I, I mean, it's in the downtown quarter and, um.
Absolutely.
I know with, um, our group and you hopefully the city and HDDA that we could work together on a lot of things to get something going on over there, so I'll.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, after the holidays, I'll, I'll get into it as I find out more from when Kenny comes, you know, what, how we going to work it.
Okay. Yeah, the HPC is, and we've talked a lot about Hindsaw and the desire to support it, et cetera, and have included, even though there isn't currently a marker at Hindsaw with it being 90 years old, the first is 100. Um, we've still included all the information with Hindsaw and just included Hindsaw as if it was, if it already had a marker because we want to be sure that people are talking about it and know about it and, um, and are ready to step in and make it better.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for coming.
All right.
Good to see you. All right, Liberty County Development Committee, Commissioner Fraser, you want to kind of just give us a little?
A little brief.
A little briefing, yes, sir.
Uh, I appreciate it, Mr. Chair. Uh, fellow commissioners, just a, a little brief update on, on what we discussed at the beginning of, of the year about, uh, Liberty County Development Authority, the Economic Development Authority and, and opportunities that we have outside of, of the, uh, municipality of Heinzville and try to, uh, create more economic opportunities. Uh, what we're going to do now is start moving forward with a lot of the key holders of, of these particular areas. Uh, for example, the other municipalities to see, uh, if they have anyone that, that they feel to come and discuss the formation of, of the authority. So, so we're going to reach out to all the other municipalities and also look at some, uh, some business owners in the community to try to help, uh, with the formation of, of the authority and just move forward with that, so.
Maybe Vanessa, you guys, for, um, people from your district, you might want to recommend to, to serve.
Right, so, so if anyone has, uh, anyone that you think of, uh, would be a, a great candidate to, to be on the committee, hopefully, you know, you all will reach out to, to me or Mr. Brown or, or the chairman, so we, we could go ahead and start moving forward.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Resolution opioid settlement.
What, Mr. Davis come on the line here? He is, uh, having to attend absentee tonight, uh, under the weather, so, uh.
I hear you.
He's, he's going to address that. This is part of the ongoing opioid settlement that y'all participated in along with a lot of other Georgia counties. Uh, this is another step in that process as they come to some kind of reconciliation, hopefully over the settlement of those cases.
Evening, everybody. Here's my coffee. I cough. But, uh, as Joey mentioned, I think everyone knows for probably the last two years, the county and other state, local governments across the country have been involved in national, uh, multi-district litigation involving, um, opioid manufacturers and distributors. And, uh, the state of Georgia and Council for Local Governments has been working together, uh, as, as has other states. And a, uh, a class action has been proposed. And, um, before you deny the documents which would approve our participation in the settlements, both as to the distributors of opioids and manufacturers. And similar resolutions are being distributed throughout the state of Georgia and throughout the various states in the country. And if we have enough participation, uh, by local governments and state governments, then the settlement can be approved. If there isn't enough, uh, approval or participation, then the litigation will continue. And so this is. And so this is a settlement that's been worked on, as I mentioned, for a couple of years. And our council, as well as the Attorney General and the Plenus Steering Committee, basically a committee of lawyers who, who had the litigation for all the parties throughout the country. Everyone has recommended approval of the proposed settlement and our participation, as well as the Georgia's participation. And I think you folks have been given copies of various documents, but principally the resolution before you approves participation in, in the two settlements, which is involving the distributors as well as the manufacturers, their two settlements, one for each of those groups of defendants. It also authorizes the execution of an MOU between the state and all the local government entities. And that discusses how the monies which will be given to the state will be allocated to all the local governments in the state and for what purposes those monies can be used for. And just in a nutshell, seventy-five percent of all funds that come to the state of Georgia will be given to the state for distribution and allocation. And about, and twenty-five percent of the monies coming to the state will be distributed to local governments. And I know everybody's probably gonna ask, well, how much is that? How much is Liberty County getting? What is our allocation? Unfortunately, we don't know yet. You know, there's, they have a panel of experts who's working on an allocation formula. And they evaluate a variety of factors, you know, the incidence of opioid abuse and reported opioid cases, population size. There are a variety of factors that go into this formula. And so that has not yet been completed. And so no one can say for certain what precise amount the state of Georgia or each local government will, will receive. But notwithstanding, you know, the total settlement value as to these distributors and manufacturers is about twenty-six billion. That's for everyone throughout the, you know, the country, both state and local entities. And, you know, Georgia's thankfully, our opioid crisis is not as severe as some, it's worse than others. But, you know, there'll be a sizable settlement payment made to the state of Georgia. And of its money, the seventy, seventy-five percent that will be given to the state, much of that will be reallocated to local governments to use on a regional basis. You know, there'll be, the state of Georgia will have programs and monies will be dedicated to each region. Of course, participating governments, local governments in those regions can benefit from those allocations. And, you know, what those programs consist of is yet unknown, they'll be developed over time. But typically, most of the funds have to be used, you know, to, to treat opioid abuse and to combat its, its consequences. It has to be some opioid-related purpose that most of the money is used for. And again, there's, there are more documents anyone would care to look at if you, if you had the time. But in a nutshell, our attorneys, the Plenus Steering Committee attorneys, all the attorneys involved representing the state of Georgia have all recommended that the local governments approve and participate in the two settlements, as well as the MOU of the state, so that the settlement funds can be quickly and efficiently distributed to the local governments. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you, if you'd like. Oh, one other important thing, I think if you folks remembered, we signed a retainer agreement with our council, Blassingame, Birch, Gerard, and Ashley from Athens, Georgia, a couple of years ago. And we had very severe limitations on, you know, their attorney fees. It would be, under the current summit, they would get probably very little attorney fees. But that's no longer the issue because as part of the settlement, therefore, most like other firms are going to forfeit recovery under their retainer agreement for attorney's fees. And they'll be paid from a separate fund, which the defendants are financing to compensate, you know, those other attorneys involved in the litigation. So we'll, we'll get our money and we'll have to pay the attorney's fees. So that's a benefit. But I'll, I'll be happy to answer the questions anyone might have. And I should say this is on a, we're on a tight schedule. It gives us a whole lot of time to respond, but enough. Each local government in the state, I think, has to respond by December eighth if you want to participate. And, you know, if, for whatever reason you consider not participating, you know, the, the state and the others have put us in a difficult situation. I'm not recommending you do that, of course, but, you know, for a government who doesn't want to participate, you're, you're really in a difficult spot because you'd have to, you'd have to continue in earnest with litigation. And, you know, just the discovery involved in litigation would, would require tons and tons of time. You know, the part of county staff and my office and, you know, it would, it would be intense litigation for an unknow period of time. And so the thing about this is it provides a quick and efficient settlement and allows for dispersing of the monies as soon as they can be made available. But that's, that's in a nutshell. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if anyone has it.
Any questions for Mr. Davis on the resolution? That, that basically just says we are part of the class action.
Yes, sir.
With that?
It, 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 it basically agrees to join in the class action settlement.
Okay.
Yes, the, the two settlements, one with the distributors and one with the manufacturers. And of course, I guess I should mention, you know, not all the named defendants are participating in this, in this settlement. There are a few others perhaps that, that might have some future potential liability. But, you know, whether or not we would ever see any recovery from those defendants is unknown. But yeah, this is, we have this settlement with these, with most of the distributors and, and manufacturers, I think. And again, this is what everyone, there's a lot more experience in than I do, including, including the Attorney General is recommending that local governments approve. So again, approving participation in each of the settlements, one with the distributors, one with the manufacturers, and then approving execution of the MOU of the state of Georgia and the other local government entities in Georgia that provide for allocation and dispersment of the state's funds that they'll make on a regional basis.
And Kelly, how, how would this work with our, as far as the hospital?
You know, I looked, I, I thought that the hospital authorities, excuse me, was formally participating in litigation. And they were, they were a party, but on the latest list provided by our attorneys, I didn't see their names. So, but as, as a general rule, if you have a sheriff or a hospital in your county that's formally participating in the litigation, they would be entitled to, you know, a certain percentage. You know, I think hospitals, it's like two percent and sheriffs, it might be eight or nine percent. I'm not certain, certain the exact percentages. But, you know, as I mentioned, most of the monies have to be used for opioid prevention or at least addressing the consequences of opioid abuse. So I imagine any of our expenditures at local level would probably involve law enforcement and the hospital in any event. Because those are probably, other than the Board of Commissioners and maybe the Board of Education, but those two entities, I think, are probably, you know, the most impacted by opioid abuse in our, in our, at the local level, the hospitals and law enforcement. But that would be a decision that you, the Board of Commissioners would make, you know, subject to the, the spending guidelines that are, that are issued by the state telling you what you can and can't spend the money for. But last, I could be wrong, but last that I, last I looked on the list of formal litigants, the hospital authority wasn't listed, that that could be an oversight.
Yeah, you need to go to the doctor tomorrow. Look here. Other municipalities, Flemington, Riceburg, how would they, they'll have to sign on, on their own? Or does?
No, I don't, I don't know. I don't think Flemington is a formal participant in litigation. You know, if there are any other cities that are, you know, the, the settlements only apply to, you know, the, the entities that are formally participating in litigation or named as a party. Typically, you know, that was, I guess, most jurisdictions, you know, they deferred to the county. And, you know, the Board of Commissioners is kind of the named litigant on behalf of all local governments. And I, I guess it becomes more important with the regional monies. As I mentioned, the states will be allocating a lot of monies to each region for use by local governments. And I'm certain those will be earmarked for, you know, specific municipalities and probably with some law enforcement and hospitals. So, you know, the, the rules regarding who might benefit from the local funds and, you know, how they're spent and what they're spent on really haven't been developed yet. But as, once all this is put to bed, that's what the state will work with local governments to, you know, to, to decide.
Well, my question wasn't about the benefit in of it, Kelly, was the combat in of it. And that is, your smaller cities, some of them do have police officers, some of them don't. And I just want to make sure that, to satisfy myself that, you know, if, if there's something happening in an area that's got their own police protection and their own city government, or is the county, or, you know, how are we gonna be looked at? Are we gonna sign on with them because it's in the county or what?
Yeah, I think, I, I, yeah, I looked at the list of litigants, Hinesville might be on there. But I, I don't think most of the, I don't think really any of our local municipalities are formal litigants in the opioid litigation. And so if you're not a party to litigation, you, you're not, you don't have to sign off on the settlement. So they, they won't be signing off on anything or participating if you're not a formal, if you're not a formal party to the litigation. So I, I don't know if I'm answering your question, but as a formal matter, if the city's not a party to litigation, which I don't think they are, then they don't, they, they don't have to sign off on anything and most of them probably won't receive any funds directly. But based on rules, regulations promulgated by the, the state, once this is done, they might provide for allocation to municipalities and hospital authorities and other local government entities, you know, to spend some of this money.
Well, look here. Get you something to help you further, just email me tomorrow.
Okay, excuse me. Yes, and if you, if you want to call me after tonight's meeting, it'll be free to as well.
Your recommendation that, that we sign on, sir, right?
Yes, sir. Not only my recommendation, but the recommendation of our, you know, outside council and the Attorney General and all the other principal lawyers involved in litigation on behalf of the state of Georgia and the local governments. So everyone, and I think even the, the judge in the multi-district litigation has, you know, is encouraging this, this settlement. And as a practical matter, you know, the state of Georgia is gonna pass legislation in the near future that will bar recovery, bar lawsuits against, you know, these, these released parties. So, you know, any local government who doesn't participate now is gonna be put in a really difficult position in the future. They would like to, you know, recover against any of these released parties, you know, the distributors and manufacturers are named in the settlement.
I will entertain a motion.
There's not a whole lot of upside to not participating and there's a lot of, of, of good news in participating. So, you know, based on that, I would strongly recommend that you folks, like most other, like the state of Georgia and other local governments approve the, of the resolution that's presented to you.
Okay, we receive it.
With the fact that we've got a DUI court, a drug court, a juvenile court, and it's obvious that we've got an issue, I, I'm gonna make a motion that we sign on the line at the
Anticipate.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anticipate in the, in the opioid settlement?
Yes, sir.
That was the, that was your, your motion?
That was his motion. A second?
Second.
Motion of second that we approve the resolutions presented by our council. Any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand, please. Those opposed? All right. All right, it's approved, sir.
All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good Thanksgiving, everyone.
You too.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Alcoholic beverage license.
Yes, sir, this is a change of ownership only for a new owner at seven-one-seven-five East Ograthorpe. That's the Bill Carter Corner Store. So just to let you know. The sheriff recommends approval based on checks that they have to run pursuant to state law and so does the planning commission.
All right, Chair entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make that motion and we'll approve it.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Is, is, is that normal?
It happens.
In, in this business?
It happens a lot. They just changed ownership, yes, sir.
It seems to be quite, all in favor? All right, thank you, sir. Item E, Commissioner Frazier, we added item E, committee appointment. So we're there now, sir. Committee appointments, committee ready to present?
Yes, sir, we're ready.
Item F, what?
I'm sorry.
Item F?
Yeah.
You amended for, um,
Item F, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the committee met today. And we had two apps for the Development Authority. And the committee recommends to, for Melissa Carter Ray to remain on the Development Authority.
Okay, Chair entertain a motion.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Ms. Melissa Carter Ray has done a fine job as reappointed.
And we had one vacancy or one for the Defacts Board to continue on with the position that was held by Ms. Frazier, who resigned. And the committee recommends Ms. Patricia Stevens. That would be my motion, sir.
Is there a second to that motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
A second motion, second, we have Ms. Patricia Stevens to complete the term for Ms. Steve Frazier on the Defacts Board. Any further discussion on that recommendation nomination? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Ms. Patricia Stevens will be appointed to the Defacts Board.
And, Mr. Chairman, we had appointments for the Hospital Authority Board. And I believe it was, we're sending over two names for two positions. The first one would be Steve Welborn and Charlotte Webb. Do we want to do individually?
I think we did individually.
Okay, that would be my motion.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Yeah, second, we're sending over the Steve Wel, Steve, excuse me, Welborn and Charlotte Webb.
Yes, sir.
As the first set of names into the Hospital Authority and they will select from that pool.
For clarification, don't we have to do it three different times?
We have three different.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Yes, if you, if you have three names, you submit three names. If you don't have three names, you can't submit three names.
Actually, we can flop them.
All in favor? We submit those two names for that position to the Hospital Authority.
And the next one was James Rogers, who would, and Steve, excuse me, Steve Welborn would like to remain on there. That was our first one. But Mr. James Rogers would like to remain on the authority. And we also put Charlotte, Ms. Charlotte Webb's name on there, if that's the way we need to send it over.
Is that?
That would be my motion.
All right, so then we're submitting Mr. Steve Welborn, James Rogers, excuse me, and Charlotte Webb for that second position. All right. Is that your motion, ma'am?
That's my motion.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, just for a little bit of clarification, Mr. Brown, there's been some discussion about Mr. Rogers' terms. Well, we just allow the Hospital Authority to, to vet that. But those two names is what we're sending over to.
Yes, sir.
As a term limit, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, three.
Three consecutive terms.
Three consecutive term limits there. And actually, he did not do three consecutive full terms. He came in actually in a, to, to pick up a final term of Mr. Clay Sykes.
All right.
Three consecutive terms as chairman or three?
Just on the board, just on the board. And then you have to be off.
And, and how, how long the terms are, are these?
Oh, boy.
Four years.
Four-year terms?
Four years.
I'm on his position.
So you can only do three, three, four-year terms?
All right, and, and our records indicate he did not do three consecutive terms, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so we didn't clear on the outside. All right, any further discussion? I want to make sure everybody's clear. We've been, all in favor of those two?
And the next one on the, person on the Hospital Authority, well, Ms., excuse me, Dr. Henry Taylor would like to remain on the authority. And he is taking the position of an active doctor.
Yes, we have to have one.
That'd be my motion.
There's a motion on the floor that we were submit, that we submit the name of Dr. Henry Taylor to serve as a physician, physician, excuse me, on the Hospital Authority as prescribed in their bylaws. Is there a second to that motion from?
Second.
Motion of second, we have Dr. Henry Taylor's name. Any further discussion? All in favor, we'll raise your right hand, please, and oppose us. All right, Dr. Taylor, name is submitted.
Okay, and the next position will be for public health, for the Public Health Board. Ms. Donna Cochran is currently on the board and she wished to remain, if that would be, and that would be my recommendation. And she serves the county's needy, underprivileged and elderly community.
Okay, we'll take your recommendation, but we'll also take a motion.
Make that motion.
All right, motion of second, we have Ms. Donna Cochran to the, name of the board again, please, ma'am?
Public Health.
The Public Health Board. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Ms. Cochran's reappointed.
Yes, sir, and that would be all, Mr. Chairman.
Did it do all right? Huh? Did it do okay?
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I, I thought it, I thought, I thought we were doing it. It went so
It went so smoothly.
Man, you need to pay attention to what's going on.
Good job, committee. Good job, committee.
Thank you, sir.
Before Mr. Brown makes his announcements, I did receive, you may, you're going to mention the, uh, the tax bills, sir? Is that part of your?
I can, but, well, I mean, I didn't have it on my list, but you can.
I, only because I got the email. You know, we asked, um, Mr. McGlaughlin yesterday about, you know, perhaps when the tax bills will go out, so let me just say, they hope to get them out. We will have a bill date November twenty-fifth, due date January twenty-fifth, so I'm trying to read his letter real quickly here, so... The tax files will go to our vendor in the morning, and they should be able to place them in the mail before Thanksgiving, before Thanksgiving, so they should be coming out very soon, so we, that's been the quickest we've ever had them out, as I can't even remember.
It'll be the earliest.
Yeah, so...
It'll be.
Good job, good job, all those persons who...
Uh, just a couple of quick things. In your packet, uh, you'll see a draft food truck vendor ordinance, you had asked for a copy of that, which the cities are considering, so I want to just put that in there as a matter of information for you, and then bring those folks, uh, probably from LCPC over to explain, you know, kind of, and I kind of walk through that along with an update on what the other cities are doing. Uh, we'll tell you that as a staff, uh, we've made contact now that y'all have approved the draft of your ARPA, uh, plan, we, I've made contact, we actually had a conversation with, uh, Ms. Jennifer Darcy of United Way the other day, uh, we're finalizing the requirements to recommend to you, uh, for businesses, small businesses to apply, we hope to have that to you the first part of December so that they can start making application in January for some of those funds. So we'll put some draft stuff together, draft only, and have that ready for you in, in December to look at some of those requirements.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Says we're the lead person?
Sir.
What name did you call us now?
Actually, United Way.
United Way.
Remember, they're, they're the ones actually administering some of Chatham's and Savanna's funds, and they already have an application process set up that's online, and pretty good, pretty good vetting process. City and county seem very happy with it.
Yeah, our nonprofits are waiting, so...
Yes, sir, yes, sir, absolutely. Uh, final thing is, we were contacted, in fact, uh, day before yesterday, uh, by the Atlanta Judicial Circuit Court Administrator, that they are going to make application by the thirtieth of this month, uh, for some ARPA funds to the state of Georgia, uh, for the backlog of Superior Court cases. The Supreme Court justices have notified them that they will take all measures necessary to reduce that backlog, which is going to mean, uh, uh, extra judges that'll come on the bench, it'll mean, uh, extra clerical people that'll come on, uh, to do that. So, uh, the court administrator recognizes that and has asked us to consider being the fiduciary of those funds, uh, which we do anyway for Superior Court, uh, for the district court, district attorney's office and stuff. We'll include more prosecutors and more public defenders. So, uh, we're getting our arms wrapped around that pretty quickly because that settlement's got to be made on the thirtieth, uh, but Ms. McGlaughlin and Mr. Mosley and I sat in on, on that, uh, and just wanted you to be aware, uh, that'll come to you, we'll, we'll let you take a look at that, we'll have to go ahead and make the application for the funds, or they actually will, and then we'll get our arms around administrative support for that.
Would, would that involve night court, Joy?
Don't, don't know. Don't, don't know what it might be.
I could do it.
That was a good show.
Don't know that it might be. Yeah.
How does that, how does that work as far as when you increase your population? Do you, do you know?
As, as far as which, which piece?
Yeah, more, more staff? I mean, we went through the census, and our population has increased, but, I mean, we just still have one state court judge.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. In, of course, that's done independently on, on the state's side, uh, I, I think it's really more proportionate not only to the census but also to the number of criminal cases that are, that are being prosecuted in the circuits, and the circuits then go out to the, uh, Office of the Courts in, um, in Atlanta to try to make their case, and the judges do too, for either more judges or additional, uh, district attorneys and staff people to handle those cases. Good, good question, though, it's a lot going there. Uh, last thing is, had a great day with the Y'all program today. Um, we, we spent time, I know, Mr. Chairman, you came out at our...
I came later.
Before that, uh, but we actually, actually had their, uh, group out at the Midcoast Airport today, took them through some governmental structure, and then took them out on the tarmac, and they got to see planes and a lot of our other functions, EMS, fire, and animal controls. I think it was, uh, very popular with them, seemed to be. Uh, they were very engaged with a lot of questions and a lot of bright, a lot of bright students.
A lot of bright students.
Um, may want to give them a quick pop on the, on the local group, on, on the youth that we're finally able to meet in person yesterday?
Oh, yes, we'd like to have our first meeting with the, uh, Liberty County Youth Commissioners, uh, about eight of them attended, they were very excited to be able to meet in person, and I would share on the Y'all presentation that, uh, Chairman got started and, and, and they just bombarded him with questions. Going on Liberty County yesterday. Two of the, uh, people in Y'all committee were from the...
They want it all.
I have a question for Joy.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, question.
Yes, sir.
Joy, um, what's the timeline? Um, you know, I met with, um, Mr. McDonald yesterday, what, what's the timeline? I know next year's an election, um, and I guess, what, the spring, they would have to qualify, so, I mean, we, we would have to kind of have something done because things are going to change.
You, you, you need to have your process completed and everything advertised, and the school board and commission approve those district lines in, in December, before December's out, so they can be submitted to the legislature in January.
December, the first week of December, just sometime in December?
Uh, sometime in December.
Yeah, as early as...
Earlier the better. I would tell you, I know there were some meetings that, that were trying to be set up, I do have some, some things for y'all, if, if you haven't been able to meet with him yet, we do need to wrap those up in the next couple of weeks to get that process started.
I know the, the slickest can of all, not quickest state, is, is Commissioner Stevens. I would pave the road. I, I don't, I don't know how he does it, man, I, I don't know how he does it.
Just lay back and watch the old man.
Watch your work, yeah. Watch your magic.
And, and you know, the, the thing about, and I know we, we on, on TV here, he, he was a, a little upset about the distribution of the splosh money, but it doesn't matter, you know, because even when you, because when you spend it, it's in his district. I mean, he, he, he gets me every time, every time.
Got to come ahead somehow.
I know, man, I, hey, you, you always come ahead.
All right, I, I put at your...
He got six roads.
All right, you know, to keep it tally, I put at your place is an invitation from the city of Flemington, November twenty-ninth, their Christmas, um, celebration. Now, I will tell you, this, this, the small cities do appreciate it when we show up at their events, so if you can, right, work on your schedules, please do when you can. I know Waltherville will have one, I'm not sure when the city of Hansel will have their Christmas tree, oh, oh, the park is, park is in disarray, I'm not sure how, I guess we'll hear about, Michelle, so she's pleading the fifth on this, please, yeah.
That's the plan, that's on a Monday, right?
It's on a Monday, yes, sir.
You did a good job with your email the other day, I, you know, typically, we get an invite, and we did with Commissioner Bowden was here about the Veterans Day things, but I didn't see anything other than what was out there, and I thought it was strictly for the veterans.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still working on ensuring that that doesn't happen again, but I, I was told that the planning was, um, down to the wire, down to the wire, but if you want to show up, you have to invite us, you can't just have an event. And that's, and I think Commissioner Stevens, he was able to go. Appreciate you.
Anyone have, I think we had an invite to the, uh, new industrial authority building down there, Mr. Brown, did you see that invite?
No, sir.
Yeah, I got that invite.